Good afternoon, everybody, and welcome to today's meeting of the Children and Families Scrutiny Board. My name is councillor Dan Cohen. I am the Chair of this board, and our meeting is webcast on the council's website so that any members of the public that are unable or unwilling to observe as in person can observe remotely. Thank you all for being here. Nice to see everybody. Let us turn to the agenda. Item one.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, just the usual procedural items of business, so I will go through the chair if you don't mind yet. Item one is appeals against refusal of inspection of documents, and there are no such appeals today, Chair. Item two is items for exclusion from the press or the public, and there are no items that fall under that category on today's agenda, Chair. Item three is late items of business, and there are no late items today. However, there are, there was rather, a supplementary pack published on Thursday, the 24th of April, just for members to note, which relates to agenda item seven on Queensway Primary School. Item four is declarations of interest, and I will pause briefly to allow any members to declare any. I shall take silence as none. And item five is apologies, Chair, and we have apologies from councillor Bowden with councillor Timmins attending as a substitute, and we have apologies from councillor, sorry, from Andrew Graham, Helen Bellamy and Nick Toons, our co-opting members. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for coming to substitute today, councillor Timmins. Okay, turning to the minutes, which are from page seven to page 20 in the pack. Are there any corrections that are needed? Someone happy to approve them as a correct record? Thank you, Ollie. And a second? Thank you, Karen. Vote in favour, please. And against? Thank you, that is carried. That brings us to agenda item seven, Queensway Primary School update. Just so colleagues are all very clear, so when, there are times when, as a scrutiny Chair, because of the tight timeframes that can sometimes be around things, scrutiny Chairs are asked to or needed to sign off on certain, certain decisions and procedures. Whenever that happens, I always make sure to bring that to the next available full scrutiny board. I have had to do that twice, interestingly, since the last full scrutiny board. One related to post-16 provision, that was already on the agenda, the other related to Queensway Primary School, and that's why I made sure it was on today's agenda, so that board members could be updated and have the opportunity to address how matters got to where they got to. For absolute clarity, that when there is no discussion in terms of matters going forward, everything is on the table, it is as if the decision wasn't made, so all matters are open going forward. And with that said, who's going to kick off for us?
I'm happy to come in. So just briefly, really, because I think it's set out very clearly in the item in the paper, but essentially, at its meeting on the 12th of March, the council's executive board did agree to approve the publication of a statutory notice on a proposal to close Queensway Primary School on the 31st of August 2025, and with the intention for a further report to be presented at executive board at its meeting in June, and that would have been with the outcome of the statutory notice. Subsequent to those resolutions that were made at the executive board, the local authority did receive further representation and received further legal advice, and determined, on the basis of that following review, that the original decision be rescinded, meaning that the issuing of a statutory notice and the subsequent consultations would not progress further, and that was then subsequently agreed at the exec board in April of this year. So, as councillor Cohen has set out, he was asked to give his special urgency, and he did indeed do so. So, you know, I'm very happy, really, to answer any questions as our officers at this afternoon's meeting.
Helen, anything to add at this point?
Just to say, like in the exec board last week, that, you know, I'm very sorry for the upset that the paper will have caused. What has already been a very difficult and emotional process for student parents, teachers at Queensway, the decision was made at last executive board, on the 12th of March, been reviewed, and last week it was rescinded, and we will learn from this, and we'll undertake a learning lessons review to learn from it, and then bring a further paper forward in due course. Thank you.
Colleagues, any questions? Ollie. Right. Rick, see, no one listens to us, Chair.
Thank you. I think it's difficult, because obviously we can't discuss what's moving forward, and obviously I have thoughts on that, so we'll park that to one side. One of the concerns I've got is the damage that has potentially been done to the school, its reputation. We've had a, I think they initially had 15 pupils apply, which was a full pan for this year, which was then dropped to 12 when the decision was in the process. That's then subsequently, I understand that those 12 parents have now accepted the invitation for their children to start in September, and that being, and I also understand that the majority of them are new parents, and that there aren't siblings, as it were, so it shows that there's still a viability there. My concern is that, and I fully understand that the numbers currently are, of pupil intake are looking down because of the birth rate in Ayrshire, and that is a big challenge. But with the special provision that's been provided at that school, I feel that the numbers in the last two years have been affected, and they would have had clearly a full pan, which they originally would have had. And I think my question is, this process has hindered or handicapped the school, and I just wonder what we can do to try and redress that, if that is the case, you know, what we're going to do, because the school is left in a very difficult position, where it is harder to justify its viability, and I'm trying not to sort of move to the future, but trying to learn lessons from the past and see what we can do based on that. I think that's my first point.
Thank you, councillor Downs. As councillor Hayden said, and as we, as I have said, at executive board, we're acutely aware, you know, of the impact, and we're sorry for the impact on the school, you know, be that children, families, head teacher, staff and governors. We are in regular dialogue, you know, with the head, with the Chair of Governors, there was a meeting with them immediately after the last executive board meeting, and there's a regular conversations going on with them, so that we can work together to address the impact that there has been, and we're not shying away from that. As you've said, the reality is that we do have the ongoing issue with falling numbers in the area, you know, and again, we have continued, you know, for a number of years now, really, to work with schools in terms of the whole planning area, but we are where we are, and as has been discussed at executive board previously, just in terms of the viability of the school and the continued financial deficit, you know, and the fact that that is projected to become worse, that that is something that equally we have a responsibility as a local authority to respond to. There's been a range of support, as you would expect, that has been given to the school, both in terms to the head teacher directly, so, you know, from our learning improvement team, but also in relation to financial investment and ongoing financial support, but none of that was able to address the significant challenges and the ongoing challenges and projected challenges that the school does have. In terms of, you know, again, children with additional needs in the school, I think what's been really quite clear is that the level of resource and the level of support in some ways that's been given to those children is not financially sustainable, and again, is, doesn't reflect, I suppose, the support that would be given in a mainstream school. So again, that adds to, I suppose, the continued projections in terms of an ongoing financial deficit. But suffice to say that we are acutely aware of the impact, and, you know, as you would expect, there's live discussion, live conversations going on, to ensure that we are supporting, you know, the staff, the head and the school community more generally.
Thank you, I understand that. One of the things that the report goes into is that you were doing an assessment on EDI and the impact that that had on the pupils within the school and within the wider community. And I think one of the concerns that many people had, and I think is probably part of the reason for the decision being rescinded, is that some of those concerns weren't fully addressed. And I said in, when I delivered a white paper for council, that I felt that there was not the provision within Ayrshire for some of the pupils from Queensway if they were to be moved away. And I think that, I'll be very careful about how I say this, but if a lesson can be learnt from the consultation, and that is something, that if that was a fuller consultation and understanding had come around that point, we may not have been where we are now today. We may have been able to fully address that in, within the consultation and come up with a solution, or if there was no solution, the decision wouldn't have been made, and I think it's, that's something I would like to say to those of you up there that will make further decisions, please, please bear that in mind. Is that okay?
Absolutely, you know, and that's why, again, we've committed at executive board to really take the time now, you know, to review, to review the position. I think it's, it's interesting, and I did share this at exec board, that as directors of children's services across Yorkshire and Humberside, we have agreed to have a day in May collectively, so that's every local authority across Yorkshire and Humberside, directors coming together with members from their legal teams, you know, other senior officers from the local authorities, because for a number of years now, you know, I suppose the pattern has been that local authorities have been responding to growth in birth rates, you know, but actually we find ourselves in a very different position now, with the local authorities having to respond to the falling birth rates and the different impacts that there are on schools and planning areas and communities as a response to the falling birth rates. So in some ways it's a new, it's a new phase, you know, for all of us, so when we're talking about, you know, learning from this particular incident, but also learning more generally about where local authorities find themselves, you know, in relation to falling birth numbers, that is something that we're looking at across the region. So in terms of learning lessons, absolutely, but also learning from best practice and learning from innovative practice and learning from perhaps doing things differently in a way that we've not done before, because we do find ourselves in a different position. So we've absolutely got to be open to that, and we are.
And I was at Queensway visiting the children's centre this morning, in fact, and I built on councillor Downs's question. I mean, I think one of the issues here is that staff and parents have already started to make choices. There are people who have started to apply for other schools, there are staff who have started to apply for other jobs, and that's simply the reality of the situation. And I think, I think we really need to, I think the community needs to know more, and we as elected members also need to know more, in terms of moving forwards and the future viability of the school. This process has been damaging, and people can, people can highlight different areas of responsibility, but that is, that is, as I see it, that's, as the community sees it, it has been a very, it has been very damaging in terms of the school, and so, moving forwards and thinking about the school's future viability, including staffing provision, including, including its viability in terms of future parents, current parents, it would be helpful to know a little bit more about how this is, how this is going to work moving forwards, because, because there's no doubt that this has caused...
Sorry, Ollie, you, you may have missed, but we need to be very, very clear, that what we're not going to address at today's board meeting is what the future holds vis a vis the school. The reason for that is as the exec board, it's a blank slate, all options are on the table, and a further report's going to be brought on that, and I'm sure as a board we would want that further report, along with any lessons learnt, come to this board, and of course we'd like to be involved in some pre-decision scrutiny, which is always the best kind of decisions. But I think we need to be really clear that we can't go too deeply into what the future holds, and I did promise the board that I would be quite robust on that.
Rebuke taken, Chair, in the spirit, in the spirit in which it was, in which it was delivered. So I'll put that as a general point, a general reflection. So I think the other, so another issue that was raised, a question that's been asked with me, and which, again, I think our residents will want to know answers to, so thinking about the legal case that was brought forward, there was obviously, a judgment has been made, and I don't have the legal expertise of some of my colleagues here, but a judgment was made that, that this proposal would be withdrawn, and so I think, given that there was a possibility, a likelihood, that some sort of legal challenge was going to come forward, I think we do need to learn lessons from that, I think the council needs to learn lessons from that, and at what point was the possibility of a legal judgment considered? I think it's one question that people are asking, and given that, given that the legal case was felt to be sufficiently strong, at what point, at what point was that decided? And I think that's not just an issue for Queensway, I think it's an issue should this situation arise in other communities across the city. So yeah, I'll put that question, I've got another one, follow-up, I'll put that one first.
You're just on, you're just on the line, so if we can just make sure we stick to, and respectfully, I will be cautiously listening to the answers, to make sure we don't start straying into what may be rather tricky legal territory, I should be charging for my time here.
Yes, thank you councillor Edwards. It's, it's very difficult in these situations, because of course, legal advice is, is privileged, so not to go into that, but my understanding at full council, a letter from a firm of solicitors was circulated, and that set out, and that was the first time that had been set out in the way it had, the case which we were threatened with. As a direct result of that, conversations were had. I think that's really all I can say in, in response to your direct question. I'm, I'm sorry if I can, I can't give any further detail.
Richard, would it be accurate to say that the council, like it always would, took legal advice and acted on that legal advice?
That's, that's absolutely true, but I'm just making the point, the trigger point, I think councillor Edwards asked for when the main trigger point was, that was the trigger point.
All right, thank you, thank you for that. The other, the other question I wanted to ask about, thinking about, thinking more generally, when there are reviews and consultations, I think one of the other things that, one of the things that parents have shared with me in relation to Queensway, is their concerns about the speed at which this took place, transition arrangements, the uncertainty that that generated for parents and families who often had a lot of other things going on, lots of things within their own personal lives, children presenting with challenging behaviours, and this simply compounded the stress. So I, I think the other question related to future reviews, there's obviously one happening at the moment in terms of children's centres, and Queensway and the children's centre are on the same site, the primary school and the children's centres. One of the concerns that was raised there is around the speed of the current consultation process and the uncertainty that that creates, both for staff and also for parents, and so in terms of lessons learned from this, lessons learned from the Queensway process, one of the very strong messages I got this morning was, can we please, can we please think very carefully about all of the issues that need to be considered, can we please be very careful when we're doing this, and particularly when there are areas, like my area, which might not score as highly, for example, on the deprivation index, it might not score as highly as other parts of the city, schools, or for that matter, children's centres in other parts of the city, but nevertheless, we have particular needs within the community, we have different needs within the community, and our communities are not necessarily, they don't necessarily have the same access that, for example, someone living in a, in a city community would have, and there are different challenges, but can we please be really sensitive to that, because this, this process has generated an enormous amount of uncertainty, and I think it's in everybody's interests that this is avoided in the future.
Yeah, well, thank you for that point. I think, I don't want to preempt, obviously, the, the lessons learned activity that we will undertake as a local authority, but often as scrutiny, you know, sometimes we are bound by specifics which then do impact on a required timescale, that could be academic years, when it comes to education, it could be a whole range of things. So again, you know, when we look at the lessons learned, when we sit down and review, you know, clearly that is something that we will look at, but, you know, I don't want to preempt that, you know, and to suggest that actually, you know, timing was an issue in terms of this particular matter that we're discussing this afternoon, because that would be to preempt any lessons learned that we will undertake.
Right.
Very informal for the end of the year, Chair. So thank you, thank you very much. A series of questions, and I was trying to split them into two aspects, legal and finance. So starting with the legal part, having read the papers, all that's referenced is, it says following receipt of representations, we've reviewed our legal advice. I think that's somewhat of a bending of reality, in a sense, we all know as elected members, there was, that those representations came in the form of illegal representations from, I think, a group of parents, and the request was that they be shared with all elected members, which, which hasn't happened. There's no reference to that in here, so can somebody very succinctly explain to me, please, what was the basis of the representations in law that forced us, what was the suggestion of what we've done wrong, that forced us to stop and go back and start again?
Thank you, thank you councillor Stevenson. I think as, as my colleagues just pointed out, it is common, or in the public domain, that a letter before action was received, and that has been shared with, as far as I'm aware, group leaders, and, but I'm not aware if that's been shared further. So the content is within that letter, which I'm not able to discuss in this forum.
I hate starting the statement with respect, but we've been given some information today for us to understand the process that was taken, but the crucial bit of that information is being left out, isn't it, in that, what is it? We're doing a lot of learning, what are we learning? So the point I don't understand at the outset is, what was the key claim as such? Whether we accept liability for it or not, but clearly we have, because we've gone back to square one, so what was the key point that went wrong in the process?
So in summary, there was a suggestion that the council's process was unlawful, and there were certain things set out within that, not all of which the council agrees with, but as set out in this report, and also set out the executive board, those, those representations were considered, legal advice was reviewed, and as a result, it was recommended to executive board that those decisions that it had previously made be rescinded. So, as you've heard, there are going to be lessons learned, and that will look into the aspects of how things might need to have been done differently, or not need to have been done differently. That's the whole, that's the whole process of the lessons learned exercise that, that I think the recommendations in this report are going to ask for scrutiny board to look at in due course.
So I'm mindful of members' rights to know, not least through the constitution, but also our common law rights as well, so, so we don't dwell on this point too, too much. I think when that comes back, with that lesson learned report, can we make sure that that point, the scrutiny board as it is, does see everything and the lessons learned, because the legal implications presumably are irrelevant at that point, because we'll have moved through a different process. I'm just mindful that if we are going to have to scrutinise something, we do need all the information before us, and I'll take the point now might not be the right time, but in future, could we make sure that we do have that information?
If I may interject, I think it's, it's important that I'm fair to officers, there was an opportunity to go into a closed session and have an in-depth discussion about the legal advice council was given, and why, and why it responded as it did. The view I took was that without the lessons learned document that would sit alongside that, which was an honest and open reflection of where it went forward, it would be a technical legal document that, that is of, someone who's read it, limited use without the, without the meaningful lessons learned document that sat alongside it. So I took the view, not to recommend that we went into a closed session, that option is open to the board, if the board feels we want to go into a closed session, we can go into a closed session and, and have that detailed discussion about the legal advice. I just felt it wasn't helpful without the robust lessons learned document that will be being done, and I would like to think as a board, we will be insisting comes to this board. That's my view, but at the end of the day, I'm the Chair, you're the board.
The person that seems reasonable, as long as the commitment is that at that future point, there's nothing under the radar from, from us as elected members. Final part on legal then. Councillor Hayden, before you took the executive board paper, the original one, to executive board, did you seek personal assurance on the legal advice offered at the time?
Are you asking if I took personal legal advice?
At the time, before you took the decision to take this, this executive board paper forward, did you seek legal advice from the officers in pass of that discussion beforehand, and is that a minuteed meeting, or is it just a case that it's presented to you as written and you sign it off?
The exec board paper was subject to legal advice, yes.
I can see that, because I can see it's written down. My question is, was there a conversation at any point between, what's the process? between what's the process or something coming to executive board? Presumably, you sit down with officers and discuss the content, it's written jointly? Or do they just present you a paper and then you take it to exec board? Is there an opportunity for discussing it and is it minuteed?
The processes that the officers write the paper, and it is then presented to me for comment and it, and, and for a discussion. And it goes through all the various processes that Julie will be best placed to, um, go through in detail. Um, and then I take it to exec board when, um, it is finalised as we see fit.
Chair, moving on to finance, um, what was the deficit?
Sorry, if, if I may, the director wanted to come in, Julie wanted to come in.
Sorry councillor Stevenson, just to reiterate really, you know, the process of taking an exec board paper to exec board does go through a process within the local authority, which will, can involve, um, you know, advice from legal, can involve advice from colleagues in a number of different directories. And that is the process that was followed in, with regards to this matter.
Um, so I think this is probably fulfilled, but in terms of the Queensway primary school, what was the deficit position forecast at the closing date? I think was it July this year you were planning, the official closing date would have been. What was the deficit position forecast if this decision had gone through? And what is now the deficit position at the end of July twenty sixth as a result of keeping the school open?
Thank you councillor Stevenson. What I suggested is I'll, I'll drop you an email with the specific detail. But i- in essence, there is a, an increasing deficit of around about one hundred thousand pounds per term. That will be the impact on a termly basis. But I'll actually pull out the, uh, numbers at the time of asking and how that progresses, and I'll let you have that.
But because we know what's at hand, the deficit position at the planned closing date of July twenty five was about a million pounds, wasn't it, from memory? Is that what we discussed?
I'm happy to come in councillor Stevenson. So I've just got the exec board report of the twelfth of March. And that does set out that at that point, the school was forecast to have a deficit budget of six hundred and eight thousand, um, just over six hundred and eight thousand pound at the end of twenty five, twenty six. Yeah, and then at nine, nine hundred and thirty eight thousand at the end of twenty six, twenty seven. And then over a million pound at the end of twenty seven, twenty eight. So it was a, an increasing forecast of a significant deficit.
Jules, did you want to come in?
Yeah, I think, I, I, because I, I was just, I, when, when the question was asked, I thought I'd just looked through that as I was going through the papers again. Uh, but I don't think on this, there isn't a figure for the end of twenty four, twenty five, which I think that's what you're asking for councillor Stevenson, is that right? Because the July this year would be the end of the twenty four, twenty five academic year. And this quotes from twenty five, twenty six onwards. So is that, I'm, I'm just trying to clarify, because I think, I think we're all looking at figures and trying to work out which one it is, yeah.
I think, I think, thanks, I think Julie had mentioned where they are. That the bit I was going to ask is, it points to something that councillor Ed was mentioned at the outset. So that, um, hundred thousand pounds per term, is that based on sort of business as usual as it is today? And have we yet projected what's likely to happen now as a result of the rescinding of this decision? Because we heard that staff, and you can't blame them, they've had to make the difficult decision of applying for new jobs. Uh, so we're actually going to be in a position where it's not business as usual, because we'll have lost staff. And we're going to have to backfill those places. And nobody's going to apply for a job in a school that's tried to close twice now in two years. So we're probably going to have to rely on agency staff. So has those figures projected an increase because of the use of agency staff?
Uh, thank you councillor Stevenson. Uh, obviously, it's a fast-moving situation. It's only a couple of weeks ago that the paper was taken to exec board and we actually got a decision. We're having conversations on a weekly basis with the, the head teacher and the chair of governors as to what the situation might mean moving into the future. Part of those conversations are around the financial sustainability of the school. Uh, we are having those conversations, but they've not reached a conclusion in terms of something that we could present back to you to say what mitigation may or may not be undertaken. We're trying to do that in partnership with the school and obviously engaging as many people at the school as we can do in relation to that. And so it would be, it would probably be premature for me to, to suggest what that might look like. But the reassurance is that we are talking to the school about what the issues in relation to their financial sustainability mean and what that might mean in terms of some short-term measures and then possibly some medium-term measures as well.
And on, on that point, whilst legal officers might not want to comment in terms of protecting the position, have, you should be able to comment, are we risk assessing any possible claim in terms of constructive dismissal claims, given the process that's gone forward?
Chair, in a, in a very simple way, the council would respond to any legal challenge, should a legal challenge be presented to it. It's really difficult to try to second guess what legal challenges might be and what our response is to those maybe should they arise. Uh, if they did arise, we'd seek legal advice and move forward on the basis of that legal advice.
Jules.
Um, yeah, I can see, as, as an employment lawyer yourself and as a trade union officer, we're looking at each other a bit confused. Um, constructive dismissal, are you saying a constructive dismissal claim from a member of staff at the school?
Let's, great, councillor Stevenson doesn't answer, isn't here to answer the question, he's asked a question.
I mean, I, I mean, staff at the school are not going to have a constructive dismissal claim either, with all due respect. It's very difficult to prove at an employment tribunal.
I mean, it's, it's quite simple. I don't need to explain, obviously, if, if that's what you do for work. But, um, the, the point being that constructive dismissal is when an employee is forced to resign owing to the conduct of their employer?
Yeah, because they have no alternative. That's why it's very difficult to prove at an employment tribunal. I think people had an alternative, they weren't forced to resign. Nobody's been forced to resign from the school, have they?
If somebody tells you your place of work is going to be closed, that's forcing you to resign early to create.
No, that's called redundancy.
I'll go, let's, let's, while, while as an employment lawyer, I would happily have a long and detailed debate about the difference of various means and modes of dismissal. Um, I, I don't think it's going to take us forward to that. I think councillor Stevenson's right to raise the, the question. I think Jules has helpfully clarified why she thinks it would be a very difficult claim to make out. I'm not going to, in that somebody might retain me on that basis, I'm not going to make any further comment. Um, colleagues, any other questions at all? Thank you.
Sorry, Chair, I've just been sitting, listening to the questions and responses. And it just feels a little bit, say, our hands are tied at the moment. It's not really a discussion that I feel that we're able to take forward really in the absence of more information, which obviously you've made the decision that you didn't think that that was appropriate for today. Um, subject to obviously the views of the board about a closed session. But I think what you suggested around having further information alongside the lessons learned is probably going to be the most helpful, um, in terms of us being able to have a productive discussion. Um, obviously, I don't want to encroach on legal matters. I can only assume it was a letter before claim in respect of a judicial review. Obviously, I'm sure people are familiar with the three grounds in respect of judicial review. We don't know what the future holds at the moment in terms of decision-making. And I think my only comment would be that I hope that when the lessons, the, the learning lessons review is undertaken, that the, obviously, that the letter is considered, but that you go beyond that in terms of not only considering the, the basis of that, that claim, whatever those points may have been in respect of those three areas around judicial review, if that's what the claim potentially is or was. But you go further than that and you consider obviously other things that you may, may have come up, come up as a result of that and as a result of what you've heard today. And that you bring obviously a fuller update to us with the lessons learned. And we, and we then have a productive discussion, because it just feels as though we can't really do that today.
I thi- I think today was very much a, I had to use a, a, a decision-making power that I don't normally. And so as a matter of course, I would bring it to the board. I think it's accurate to say this is a limited discussion today, probably best under the heading of quite how did we get here? Um, um, and, uh, where do we go from here? Um, Julie and then Rick.
Just to say absolutely, you know, and I think as a director, it's really, really important, really critical for us as public servants, um, to have a learning culture. And that's right across the director, whether that's in, you know, our learning, our children's social care, our family help. We've got to have a learning culture. And key to that is, um, is having feedback, you know, is reflecting on our position, is reflecting on the advice that we've had, as I've already set out this afternoon. Um, you know, it will also involve thinking about best practice, listening to local authorities across the region in terms of their practice, how they're responding to this particular, um, you know, issue that we have at the moment because of the change in context. So absolutely, we want to get as much learning and examples of best practice going forward as we possibly can.
Thank you Julie, because I think I was interested in what you said as well about decisions around school place planning and sufficiency being very much driven by birth rate. But actually, it's a different, it's, it's a different playing field now, in a way, isn't it? And we've, you know, we've obviously had a, we, you know, we've had, at this board, we've been having the, you know, the reviews in respect of the HCP processes and the increased demand around SEND. And obviously, there's a pressure in terms of making savings. But sometimes that, those, those decisions around making savings can be made in the short term without perhaps a longer term view around how we might save and taking into account what we know about increasing complexities of families and increasing SEND needs. It's, it's looking at that in its widest context, isn't it? And not just being perhaps led by what the birth rate as, is in a particu- a particular point in time when you're making that decision.
Yeah, absolutely. It's a genuine opportunity with an absolute commitment for the local authority, for the director to really, you know, review in its widest sense, you know, and a commitment to learn where we can learn and develop best practice as well as a response. So absolutely.
If I could just add that, um, we are committed to having a look at the whole of Leeds in an area approach, exactly as you were, um, alluding to there. Um, this is not something that is just in the Ayrborough area that's a, a problem. We're seeing it across Leeds and across the region, as Julie, as Julie said. And in fact, across the country, I was, um, with friends, um, from London who were saying, oh, you got, you've got that problem in Leeds as well, you know. So they have varying and different problems with the birth rate in terms of, in terms of London. But it's a, it's a national, it's a national issue. Um, but we're responsible for in Leeds and sufficiency and the best possible way forward. So we will be also, um, bringing, and we will bring to scrutiny, um, you know, um, kind of ideas and plans and designs around a whole, an area-based approach to the whole of Leeds.
Thanks Chair. Yeah, just to expand on that point, I think I'd like to thank you for bringing this, this paper to us so we've had the chance to air some of our thoughts. Um, the one thing that I would ask is that, um, when you prepare the council's response to the learning that's been made from the, um, legal document that was, or the, the sort of pre-legal document that was submitted to the council, it would, I think it'd be very useful for scrutiny to be able to look at, um, the response and that document together before moving on, so that we can actually see what lessons ha- are going to be learnt and how they're going to be learnt. Um, so that no other, um, school or area goes through the trauma that has happened. And we can move forward with a coherent and cohesive, um, method of addressing this, which, um, is fair to, you know, all children. Um, and so I think if it's possible to, I would like to see that review done before anything further is done, because lessons have to be learnt and they must be learnt first before you can move on. Thank you.
In, in terms of the whole city planning, that would be a more strategic, um, document that I'm very, very happy to bring to, to scrutiny. We do have some pressing challenges to, to address immediately. We also do not have all the levers to implement anything, a plan that might be. We have multi-academy trusts who are responsible for their schools and that we do not have the authority over foundation schools. We have, um, it's a very, um, varied picture across the country. And therefore, as a local authority, although we've got responsibility for sufficient, sufficiency, we do not have. But, you know, we are committed to working with the DFE and with, and with partners, um, to try and address these challenges. But, but, and, but we have to address the immediate challenges that we have as a local authority and local authority schools. Um, but we, we do want to have a whole city approach as well. But that may not be able to be implemented fully if our, if our partners don't implement it within their, within their schools, such as reduction of pans, et cetera.
Just trying to seek a reassurance that, um, whether it's possible to have that, um, come back to the, to the board.
Well, I'm going to try and pick some of those up shortly. I just have one questionet, if I may. Uh, it's, it's a fairly practical question, because what we do know is that in September, the school is reopening this year. Just can we have some reassurance as to the mechanics of ensuring that the school will be safe in terms of staffing, physical, I don't forget, anything to do with the future. Just in September, it's going to reopen. We need some reassurance that the school will be safe in terms of staffing levels, uh, and in terms of the physical mechanics. We don't need the details, but some absolute reassurance in this public forum that the young people going there will be safe and that there are mechanisms right now to make sure those happen.
I'll come in and then I'll hand over to, to Dave. Um, clearly, there's a number of different key stakeholders, you know. And again, you know, one of our strengths in Leeds is working in partnership and various partners with different levels of responsibility. So the governing body in a school, as an example, having specific statutory responsibility. Um, as colleagues around the table will be aware, in terms of staffing, health and safety, et cetera. Um, but suffice to say, as has already been said, we are in regular dialogue with the head teacher, with the chair of governors. Um, and we will work collectively as a partnership, um, you know, to do our very best to ensure that children, um, are safe and are given, um, you know, the help and support that they deserve and require. But I'll hand over to, to Dave.
Thanks Julie. It was just really, just reiterates that councillor Karen a little bit, that, that actually a school, any maintained school opening, um, it would be the responsibility of the governing board and the school leaders to make sure that, that all, everything is safe. They would, we have our eyes as well on Queensway in terms of the support. So they would have our support if there were issues that needed dealing with. Um, so, and I think we've been in that position before with another school that actually had, didn't have enough staff. And we worked alongside them to make sure that things were, were right and safe and appropriate for them to, to carry on. So it's, yeah, we would work with the, through a team around the school approach with Queensway.
Yeah, I, I, as a governor of four schools, uh, and as a governor that leads on safeguarding, uh, I, I understand that the responsibility sits with the governors. I suppose that's where my question in some ways comes from, because we, we talk a lot, don't we, about doing things with rather than doing to. Uh, and if I was sat on that board of governors, I would rather felt like something was being done to me. Uh, and I'm going to have some legal responsibilities that may be beyond my control. So I'm asking for some reassurance to this scrutiny board that the council will be doing everything to ensure that the school can be safe and safely operated.
Thank you councillor Karen. And just to reiterate, the local authority is working hand in glove with the head teacher and with the chair of governors to that effect.
Thank you for that reassurance. Before we move on to the recommendations, anybody, anything else? Right, yeah.
Point, um, councillor Hazel mentioned redundancies. So presumably, the initial process for this was that the outcome of a statutory notice would have come back to executive board on the eighteenth of June to close the school the thirty first of August. So was it the intention that the statutory timeframes for redundancy consultations would take place after the eighteenth of June? Was that the planned process, just to understand? Just to understand what, what the process was before and what we need to do going forward.
I'm going to, it's a hypothetical because it didn't, so we can pick that up at a, at a later, but because of the decision that was made, it, it's a hypothetical question.
The question, I'll frame it a different way. I have a right to assume that no redundancy period was started at this stage. We haven't stopped a redundancy process that was already begun.
So your question is, had a, had a redundancy process, had a redundancy consultation begun, had we issued any initial notices? Well, actually you can stop a redundancy process at any point in any event, but.
Hi, thank you. The governing body are the employers of the school staff, not the local authority. To our knowledge, they hadn't commenced any redundancy processes.
Yeah, okay. Are we okay to move to the recommendations? I have tried to make sure reflect what we've talked about. Okay, so I'm going to propose three recommendations. I'll propose them if somebody wants to second or amend or tweak or change, happy to do so of course. So recommendation A, that we note the resolutions the executive board, which reflected the recommendations set out in reports at appendix one and two, which are provided as an update on the proposals for Queensway Primary School. Two, that we ask to receive the future report, setting out the conclusions of the lessons learned exercise. And then thirdly, that we ask to receive the report to executive report, setting out future options in relation to this matter and that subject to the future board, we would ask, we ask that come as a pre-decision item of work. So I propose those. Is anybody happy to second those? Rick, second, all in favour? Any against? Any abstentions? Unanimous, thank you very much. Okay. Thank you colleagues all for that. Thank you Nicole for being here. Okay, item eight. Annual report on academic outcomes. Who's going to kick us off? Julie?
So the report does set out the academic outcomes. It gives externally validated outcomes data and that's following statutory assessments and examinations which took place in primary and secondary schools during 2024. It does cover all education settings in the city, regardless of them being maintained or academy status schools. Schools and academies are directly responsible for improving pupil outcomes through individual development plans. The report also gives an overview of the activity, the work that's been undertaken by the local authority's school improvement service, who also clearly work again in partnership with schools, maintain schools to improve outcomes. And the report also sets out a range of wider support services from the local authority, which also contribute overall to improved outcomes for children and families.
I'd just like to say thank you to everybody in the city who works day in, day out, week in, week out, all academic year and to get the best for our, for our children and young people. And there's some, there's some real successes in this report and there's areas to work on and to keep working on, which we are committed to do as team leads and, you know, across the, across the city. We'll be discussing later in the meeting, but we welcome the £10 million central government funding to help provide additional places for, you know, our further education students within the 16 to 19 bracket. And this will help support improvements and ensure that the vast majority of our young people have a place in education, employment with training, suitable to them. So I will leave it there, but just a huge thank you to everybody and to the learning improvement team at the city council for all the work they do across the city, supporting staffing schools. Thank you.
Questions, comments, observations, colleagues? As colleagues on the board will know, what I normally do when no one asks questions is I automatically ask Ollie if he's got a question. So you saved me doing that. Ollie.
Thank you very much. Looking at the, the early years foundation stage, there are some very encouraging signs in it. I mean, I note, I note what's been said about Leeds being below national for early years headlines. Having said that, looking through this, so looking particularly around free school meals eligibility, English is an additional language, which as board members will know is a particular area of interest for me and also pupils with a special educational need or disability. It is, it is encouraging to see when looking at the national figures compared with the Leeds figures, that the Leeds figures are above in terms of the increase. I would like to thank everybody who's, who's been working hard there and, and I think that's something that's worth highlighting. And particularly as within Leeds, as with any big city, we have issues that maybe other local authorities will not have and more challenging circumstances. So that is really promising and particularly as well, when we think about the importance of early years and the impact that that can have on a child's or young person's development. So that's very promising. My question is, how can that be kept going as those children and young people get older, as they progress, as they go through the education system? What's being done to make sure that those improvements can continue, that that's sustainable? And what can be done to uplift those figures even more? Thank you.
If I come in first with, you know, without the detail, but it, it should be noted that yes, we have challenges in the early years and again, I want to thank, you know, I've visited quite a lot of nurseries and, you know, and we have a meeting of the early years, which includes childminders, et cetera, and they do a lot of work in getting children school ready and, and I'm working, I'm working with children and want to thank that. And there is an improving picture. Having said that, our primary schools are incredible because we've become then, given the challenges at early years, when, you know, children don't have to attend any kind of, you know, institu-, or a childminder or a nursery or any kind of establishment, we then go and are not legally required to do so, then our primary schools are above national average in, at year six. So they're already doing an incredible job. What I would like is that if we can get the early, if we can that, maintain that improving and we will work very hard to do that, that improving picture in early years, then automatically all the amazing work that's going on in our primary schools and then exacerbated further by the incredible work done in our high schools because we're further above average at the age of, of 16, then that can, that, that, those performances at 11 and 16 will be even greater with the improving picture in the, in the early years.
Yeah, thanks councillor Hayden. The councillor Hayden's right in terms of, you know, we're trying to do as much as we possibly can, the best starts for those young people to, to really give them the best baseline for which to build all the way through their educational journey. I think the best start strategy was, I think that, that was brought to scrutiny and I think that's one of the ways of bringing a range of different aspects of agencies involved with young people to really make a difference. I think in terms of the local authority currently, we've, for example, got a project that, where we've identified 20 of the most significantly vulnerable cohorts across the maintained sector and those 20 schools are working with our early years improvement team to raise the level of performance and outcomes and support the staff. So that's, you know, there's training, training involved in that, onsite meetings, working together to look at data and, and really utilise the data effectively to make progress. So I think that's a really good strategy at the moment. We're using, our early years team are using the DFE project money that, that we, we've received to support childminders and early years providers and foundation stage one settings to, to develop. And I think one of the, the important projects that we've got going at the moment is our early years team have done a significant amount of work on the SENCO network to bring early years providers from private settings and schools together to talk about supporting those young people with really specific needs, which helps then the overall improvement in outcomes for that early years cohort. So I think there's a lot that we're trying to do. There's always more that we want to do, but I think you're right to, if we can get the best start for those young people, it, it sends them off on a much more positive journey than, like councillor Hayden says, if their, if their baseline is, the higher their baseline, the further they can go. So, yeah, thank you.
Thank you Chair. So not being a regular on this committee, I don't always get to see the figures set out as they are. It probably touches on to your question a little bit, but what stands out to me looking at that is the levels of attainment, the difference between disadvantaged children and children that are not from a disadvantaged background. So what, what are the factors that are affecting children from the poorer backgrounds and why they're not achieving that level of attainment? And is there anything that we can do across the board to close that gap so that every child, no matter what background you're from, gets the same opportunities, you know, throughout their education?
Thank you councillor Timmins. Sorry, it's the reason I came into politics. You know, when I was, when I was teaching, it's often, my biggest frustration was I could do, you know, I could be the best possible teacher I possibly can be and have fantastic lessons and, you know, obviously I'm engaging, but it's, but, you know, if a child doesn't have a bed to go to sleep on, as a, as a young girl came up to me, nowhere to do their homework, doesn't have the right diet or enough food or the right food, it doesn't matter what I do in the classroom really, doesn't it? So it's those wider determinants and of, of education, which then feeds into health and all the rest and even how long a person lives. And, you know, we call education the silver bullet, but actually you can't, it, it, it won't be effective if all those other determinants are not right. And it's, it's the reason I'm here really, to try and get all those other things right around, around housing and poverty and, and things like that. So I'll let the experts come into the detail about how we're trying to address that, but it's a multiple, and also the government is piloting breakfast clubs at the moment and hopefully in like 18 months' time, we'll have them rolled out. So if we can get food into the bellies of our, of our, of our children, they're going to have the best possible start for the day and then the best possible start to the, to their education journey. And, but as always, the, the, there's a huge factor with, with funding and, you know, getting, getting it right for people and schools, educationalists not being in control of those wider determinants. But yes, there's things we can do as a council that I'll hand over to, to Dave. Thank you.
Thanks councillor Hayden. Yeah, I mean, there's a lot, I mean, it is a significant problem, the disadvantaged gap for young people in the city. And actually Leeds has got a disproportionately larger sort of like disadvantaged and much more diverse grouping around that disadvantaged cohort. Schools and academies do a brilliant job in working with disadvantaged young people and you'll see throughout the report, there's actually a lot of progress that, that can be evidenced, that they, that they make with those young people, but are determined to do more and I think the council are also determined to do more. In terms of the schools receive their pupil premium funding, which they allocate to developing project systems, interventions to support their young people. From a local authority point of view, one of the things, we do what we can to support those schools, to put strategies in place. For example, our secondary sector, we, we, the learning improvement team facilitate the LLP network, the Leeds Learning Partnership, which is all, all secondary schools or virtually all secondary schools, the majority of secondary schools, over 13 subject areas with middle leaders coming together to share practice. And I think that's, those types of projects where we facilitate that network are, are quite impactful in terms of what's happening for those young people on the ground. So yeah, we, we, we need to keep, you know, and our strategies such as the three As, they all like impact on those disadvantaged young people and what we can do to support.
Thank you Chair. I just wanted to add, Dan and I have been working together, looking at from our learning colleagues and social care on the preventative work and supporting families in disadvantaged areas. We're fortunate in Leeds, we've got fantastic third sector partners, partnerships with our schools, councillor Hayden chairs, our poverty board, we've got a poverty strategy and there are things that make a real difference. For example, our uniform exchange has been really successful in partnership with Zero Waste Leeds, as well as looking at food banks, targeting schools, our holiday clubs, healthy holidays, et cetera. So part of our poverty strategy, our best start strategy and Leeds being a Marmot City outcomes, we're focused on educational outcomes as a protective factor. We recognise that poverty disadvantages in relation to education, but also other outcomes, health, et cetera. So that's a core part of the discussion. So it's not, you know, our head teachers, our schools do a fantastic job, but it's that team leads approach that is all our responsibility. So I just wanted to reassure you that those discussions around learning are held in every forum.
Thank you. Tim?
Thank you Chair. As has been mentioned, early years is one of the worrying areas, which is looking at the bottom of page 23. So obviously it's concern that the pupils eligible for free school meals, achieving good level of development. We've got the comparison nationally, but is there a comparison with the core cities for that?
Yes, that is available. We can provide that after the meeting. Just because where we break it down by disaggregate by characteristic, the list ends up very long if you include all the comparative groups. So we tend to just compare to national, but yes, we can provide that.
Thank you. I was just thinking, has that looked like the most concerning one? Would it be useful to have the breakdown of that particular city? Just to check that there isn't something meaning we're actually behind the other core cities and then looking into what's happening there if we are.
Thank you sir, I thought somebody else was coming in then. Just so colleagues know, I've got Ryan, Ray, and then I've got Ollie again. That's who I've got so far. Have I missed anybody? Thank you. So Ryan.
Thanks. It follows on from an earlier conversation point about free school meals. Councillor Hayden, have you evaluated? Councillor Hayden, have you evaluated the impact of the government's cuts to free school meals are going to have?
There's no cuts to free school meals. That was an erroneous story and I've received assurance from the Secretary of State that there will be no changes to free school meals.
That answer probably explains the mess we got into Queen's Way. The government has changed the eligibility criteria for free school meals. I don't know if you're aware of that as the executive board member, but there will be cuts to free school meals because no longer are you eligible for what was known as forever six beforehand for the rest of your school fares. You have to be reassessed in order to save money. That's, that's a cut. So what impact is that going to have on schools in Leeds?
The potential changes to how the benefits system is.
Sorry, I'm correct, I've, I've misunderstood. I'm not talking about benefits in this. Your government has changed the eligibility criteria for free school meals. Are you aware of that?
I'm questioning whether you're correct in saying that it's changed the eligibility for free school meals.
Shall we, could we get clarified, officers, has there been a change to the eligibility criteria to free school meals?
I think in order for us to answer that question in detail and with confidence, I would ask that we can just reflect on that and come back on that point. Because I'm sure there's lots of variables within that.
If, if I make it. I would have liked, I would have thought officers would know, looking at the expertise, whether there was, there had been a change, but if you're going to have to come back, then you're going to have to come back.
I'm afraid we are, yeah. I suppose we've come prepared today to talk about the academic outcomes and the report that's been presented. And I would, confidence, I would like just to have the opportunity to review the response, just to make sure that you've got it as robustly and as detailed as I'm sure you would like.
Okay, councillor Stevenson.
Well, direct from the council's website, in Leeds, new applications received from the first of April twenty twenty-five, free school meals entitlement will not be guaranteed until the end of the current phase of education. That's the change that was introduced. And I would have thought that at least the executive member would have been aware of that.
Right, thank you for that clarity. So what has changed is not the eligibility for free school meals. What has changed is whether you get it for the entirety of your, should your circumstances change and incomes improve, then you will no longer be able to have free school meals. That is a change. It's not a cut and it's not a change in eligibility.
The website goes on to say, instead the local authority will regularly review the child's eligibility. That's a change to eligibility.
Should parents and carers earn more money and their circumstances improve, then that's a real benefit to everybody and that is, that is a positive change in circumstances. And therefore they, it will be reviewed just as all benefits are in terms of whether people are still in need of those benefits or not.
Well, we agree on the point that people are certainly better off in work and the government's wider benefits cuts certainly seem to deliver that. But, but the extent to that, I had a question to that is, the reason forever six is introduced was because those in insecure work, often the most disadvantaged communities, well, the, the, the terms of their employment are often quite short and insecure. So for one, one month or two months, a household income could increase and then that person could move out of work and they fall below the radar again. And the time in which to claim and be reassessed for free school meals took so long that children, when those children were missing out, when they were dipping in and out of eligibility. And therefore the extra support that they would get as a free school meals child, I mean the data we've got, was, was, was smoothed out by the fact it was forever six. So in terms of the changes that are, now that's going to go back to how it used to be, that you'll fall off a cliff from day one when your parents earn a bit more, more money, and then you'll have to be reassessed. Well, that, that is what the government's proposed. You'll let, if you let me finish.
It'd be regularly.
Well, let me finish the point because we started with you not understanding what was happening. So I'll just finish the, the point that it will then take some time to reassess those children for them to be eligible for free school meals again, under the new government's proposals. So what are we doing as a council to ensure that the time it takes to reassess those people who have fallen off the list and need to come back onto it can be as quick as possible to ensure that that support as intended is there for the child?
It says that we regularly reassess. That's not on a monthly basis or even on a termly basis. It might be on a yearly basis in, in terms of being reassessed. But I will commend the government for bringing in its employment bill that will stop that kind of practice of people being on short term or zero hour contracts and make work more secure and have sick pay from the first day. And if we're going to traverse into the world of employment and tackling poverty and making sure that work pays, then the government's doing a lot on that as well and we will support them in that.
So just to clarify Chair, something, so the executive member just said that the reassessments might take place annually. So if a child is in a household that was on free school meals and their parent in February gets a, a better job and they fall off the entitlement, and then three months later, for whatever reason, and there are different reasons why jobs change, they might move location or whatever, that they fall back under the thing, you're saying that it could take a full year before they get reassessed?
I'm not saying that. I'm not saying that and please don't put words into my mouth. You are hypothetically conjunctual. What it says is that children will be regularly assessed. That includes getting more children into free school meals and making sure, and we're also looking at auto enrolment as well. So what, what you are suggesting is, has not happened, you're going hypothetically again. I did not suggest that. I said it could be, it says regularly assessed. This, and this is something for, and, and we're looking at all other things about, including getting more children into free schools meals, not less. Sorry.
Okay, let's, we'll bring Julie in, but then we'll draw a line under this. Briefly, well, I'll let Julie come in and then, and then we'll, we'll take a view.
Thank you councillor Coe. I think just to maybe reiterate what I said earlier, which is, I can absolutely understand the correlation and the relationship between children on free school meals and the report and the fact that it's referenced in the report. But actually I think the discussion that we're having really was straying into benefits and welfare benefits. And given that that's an area which resources and strategy director have responsibility for, not children and families, we'd be very happy to give a more detailed account.
Yeah, I think the question was, do we think that the change is going to have an impact on outcomes? And we then, we then, we then seemed to stray off and I'm keen to draw a line under that. I think, I'm not sure we've actually had an answer to the question whether we think there's going to be, whether we think the change may impact outcomes, which is four square in relation to that, because we went down a bit of a blind alley. I'm not going to take any more comments on, on this respectfully. Your second question.
My second question, we mentioned breakfast clubs at the beginning. It was announced today that over a hundred schools have pulled out because it's not properly funded. Do we know if any schools in Leeds have pulled out of the trials and breakfast clubs to date?
Not that I'm aware of currently. It's my first day back from leave councillor Stevenson, but not that I'm aware of currently.
Thank you.
There were a number of schools that were initially approached to take part and given a very short time scale to, to have it implemented from the beginning of April, after the Easter holidays. So though we know that some schools have found it challenging to get up and running as quickly for this first early adopter programme. I don't have the exact numbers, but we can have a look at those and come back.
We did have, we do have one school that wanted to, but were, because of a problem with their roof. So it wasn't anything to do with the scheme as such, that they weren't able to, to take part in the scheme, you know, starting in April. But that was circumstances outside their control.
Thanks for those answers. Ray.
Thank you Chair. On page twenty-four, I'm looking at the spreadsheet basically there, disadvantaged pupils in cohorts at the end of key stage four. And I find that absolutely fascinating because what it's quite clearly showing to me is that the more disadvantaged children that attend that school, the actual effect on them is longer term. That will affect, I would imagine, because the results won't be quite as good. How does this tie into how they're measured in terms of their performance when Ofsted turn in? Because there must be an effect and it must be hard to measure something if, it must be harder at a school where we've got a lot of disadvantaged children than at a school where we have none. And what is the effect of Ofsted on that? And that might be a question you can't answer, but I'm, I'm, I'm trying to understand the effects of poverty here, to be honest.
And having worked in a school with a high proportion of deprivation, back in the day when I was, when I was teaching, you had contextualised data. So Ofsted would judge a school based on its contextualised data deprivation being a huge factor. That doesn't apply now and that is having a really, a negative effect because I've got schools in my world, because I used, I used to work in them, that are doing amazing work around attendance, around engagement, around, and what they do in the classroom. But because of the disadvantage and that they are coping with, it's very hard for them to perform in the same way as a school with less disadvantaged pupils. So you're absolutely right. So I've, I've just given an overarching thing. It is, it is a big issue. I would, I would want Ofsted to bring back contextualised data so we can really see the brilliant work schools are doing in, in our most disadvantaged areas. But I'll let Dave come in on that.
Just, yeah, I don't, I don't, disadvantage doesn't have to be the barrier. We've got some schools on that list, maintained and academy, where they've got high levels of disadvantage and they've been judged outstanding by Ofsted, you know. And I think, you know, so I think it's disadvantage and lots of, lots of elected members are governors, so they know, you know, they understand this. It's about, it's also about the culture, the ethos, the expectations, you know, about the, the way that schools work with their cohorts of, of young people. And like you say, you know, there's some really good examples right across the sector of schools and academies doing a really good job despite the, the disadvantage. Anything else you want to say?
Didn't know if anybody else was coming in. Okay, thank you. Shanna.
Thank you Chair. I just wanted to start off with an observation. So the, the proposal, the impact of the three pillars of the best city ambition, it's, it's chosen just the inclusive growth. And I was just wondering why it also impacts on health and wellbeing, why that wasn't ticked. I mean councillor Hayden, you did also say that, you know, it does have a huge effect on life and impact on, people with better education tend to live longer. There's so much research that we, that, that determine, information that we get that supports the social determinants of health. So I was just wondering why that wasn't ticked and if that opens up any doors for that director for education, if we do tick health and wellbeing as well. And then the second point in regards to the de-delegating, the DSG funding for the provision, it says of centralised services to support the educational attainment of ethically diverse pupils and pupils who speak English as a second additional language. And it means that from April twenty twenty-five, that the councils will no longer operate this service. And it says that instead the schools will have to make alternative arrangements to support these pupils with their own individual budgets. And my concern is, I completely understand that there's no legal limitation, but what if the school chooses not to put any supporting services there? And the report also recognises that these individuals are the ones who speak English as a second language are the, one of the ones that are the most disadvantaged. So that's one question. And then the second question was something around, some clarity around school improvements. With the provision of the youth services, does that come, also come under that umbrella of the school improvements? And then my last point was around the early years. And I think it's amazing the work that's been done, especially with the best start strategy. I've got a toddler myself, so I understand how important it is to give your child the best start. And, and I think, you know, having the review at, at two years old is probably too late to, you know, when they're hitting their terrible twos and trying to get in reading and those kind of habits. If you haven't kind of already incorporated it, you're going to struggle massively to kind of get them, get them in then. So I'm just wondering what does that best start strategy look like and how much work do you do with families? And you know, and you're expecting, and you're expecting families before baby's born to kind of get the message about reading early, you know, even if, you know, they can't read, but they're listening and it's engaging and having clear communication and, you know, those kind of little skills that they need in terms of eating healthy and these, healthy habits starting them early will, you know, hopefully give that best start. So I was just wondering what does that look like? Thank you.
Thank you. Youth services come under communities, so, because they, they work out in the, in the communities, so in, in terms of, yeah, do you want to come out?
Sorry, no, my question was, so you've got, it was about who impacts learning outcomes in Leeds. So I was just wondering, do you class the youth provisions under that? Because you've put an umbrella term, school improvements. I was just wondering if they come under that term?
Not directly, no. I mean, they do have an effect and especially, because, and especially with engaging. And I, I, I attend with councillor Harland, her, who's the exec member for communities with youth services. So we have a joint briefing from senior officer in, in, in youth services. So I'm, I'm very keyed in and the, you know, but not directly in terms of learning improvement. Where they do serve a wonderful process is in, in terms of engaging children and young people who might be neat, sorry, not in education, employment or training, just to explain the anagram. I don't know, but anyway. And, and in also in terms of attendance at school and mentoring, that sort of thing. So they do have an effect. We know it's difficult to quantify, especially as they deal with children who go to all different schools and young people who go to all different schools. So it's very difficult. So not directly, it wouldn't come under learning improvement, but I very much take your point and I am very keyed into, you know, what happens in, outside of school has an effect. In terms of that, and I'll, I'll leave the, the first question to officers, but I don't know whether Dave wants to come in now and then I'll address like the.
Thanks, thanks councillor Hayden. Yeah, so I pick up the, the closing the gap team, the underperforming education group. So the situation's happened, so main, the maintained sector schools, we've got a hundred and sixty odd maintained schools. So each year they did, they can de-delegate certain parts of their budgets back to the local authority to provide a central service. Up to this year, they've de-delegated back for the underperforming groups category. So that's a decision, so funding from the DFE is passported to the school's budget. So it's already there, just like it is for academies. So the money for that support is within school budgets. The difference for the local authorities that maintain schools, de-delegated back. So it becomes one big pot. Because that stopped from April, there isn't that closing the gap, we call it closing the gap team. So as a service, we're now reviewing, how do we do that? Because, so we're looking at what sort of traded offer we, that's the only other opportunity we have is to do it as a traded offer. So what traded opportunities can we enable schools to be able to buy in to provide that service? But you mentioned about sort of how will we make sure schools are using that money? I guess the accountability from schools is their performance data, Ofsted going in, you know, so, so there is still that accountability that actually, regardless of which groups it is, schools, academies need to be able to explain the narrative around how they're supporting those young people to make progress. So, so we, so hopefully that explains that, that little bit. And we're, we're going to do, like I said, we should be in a position quite soon to, to, to say what our offer would be to schools. Okay, I've forgotten the other question.
Quite happy to come in. So I think, I think it was around your best start and beyond and really. So I think, um, I think it was around your best start and beyond and really the strategy. And it was around how, uh, well, recognising that if we can support children um, as early as possible in their life around language, speech, communication, reading, literacy, numeracy, that, that's going to be a positive um, impact on future determinants in life. Uh, so absolutely. Then we've got another paper coming uh, this afternoon on the agenda, which is all around the um, national children's social care reform and within that family help. You know, and again, I think what we have got in Leeds is our, I think, family strategy. So again, recognising the impact as we've already talked, you know, in terms of pressures, poverty, just life adversity, you know, that, that um, impacts on parents, you know. And to be honest, you know, as a parent myself, as a grandparent now, um, you know, time, you know, sometimes, you know, people having to work, having to work long hours, you know, actually the time that they can give to their children. But also recognising, um, you know, through our three A strategy, you know, reading, writing, being everybody's business, you know. So whether we're a health visitor, whether we're a um, a worker in the voluntary community sector, whether we're a social worker, you know, wherever we have as professionals contact with children and with families, really talking about the importance of speech, language, communication, literacy, talking about books, you know, thinking about um, how we can support families, you know, libraries as an example. So really, um, I suppose it's a golden thread, it's got to be a golden thread through all of our practice as a partnership within the city. But also recognising some of the barriers to that, you know, and actually, if I think back in my career and perhaps going back probably about twenty years ago, um, and, you know, working with a young mum, um, who did not want to write in her little toddler's journal, um, because she struggled with literacy herself. And her view was that she didn't want to spoil it, you know. So actually, um, and if we hadn't have had that conversation with her, we wouldn't have known, you know, that actually mum had challenges herself. So I think it's about relationships, it's about developing trust in relationship, it's about knowing our children and knowing our families and knowing the, 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 the variety of, of issues that can impact on that. Um, we've got an event next week um, in the city all around family help, you know, and what does that look like? And it's got to look at early conversations, you know. And absolutely, as I've said, speech, language, communication, literally, numeracy being everybody's business within the city. The wellbeing, health and wellbeing point, I don't think we've covered either which you asked, which is an important point. And yeah, absolutely, you know, um, educational outcomes, you know, success, um, attainment. Um, of course, that does impact on, on health and wellbeing as well as in, as inclusive growth. We try and keep the reports as succinct as we can and that's something that we're, uh, we're trying to do more and more. But absolutely, of course, there is an impact on health and wellbeing for children in the city, definitely.
Um, yeah, I'm happy to have the conversation and looking at how we can evidence the, the effect on health and wellbeing in a, in a succinct way as possible. Um, because, yeah, you're absolutely right. When um, yeah, when I went to visit, when I was in charge of infrastructure, I went to visit a house that had been retrofitted in Holbeck. The point that the parent, this fabulous parent pointed out is that her four children could now do their homework in their bedrooms because the house was warm and, and safe. You know, they didn't have to stay in one room. So that has an effect on their health immediately because they're in a warm house, but also on their educational outcomes, which then affects their long-term health and wellbeing. Um, so it's incredibly important how it all like, um, fits together. So we'll have a look at that for the, for the next report. Thank you.
Thank you, that's really, really helpful. Um, and uh, just the point on the DSG funding, I think that's what my concern was, that uh, there wasn't anything in place in terms to monitor who is currently being supported with that funding. And if it was to be reviewed after, that's kind, I think prevention is better than cure, isn't it? Um, and, and by then, I think it'll be too late for those individuals who didn't get the funding and lacked that support and have already missed out on the opportunity. So that is a, a concern, I think. And if...
Yeah, a- again, like with many things, we're dependent on the schools to um, to buy into that, metaphorically speaking, um, to, to deliver that, as with, with many things. And, you know, um, we'd love to support, unfortunately, because budgets are the way that they are. Um, it's increasingly more difficult for schools to delegate back that funding for specific work that I'm sure a lot of schools will want to keep, um, want to keep doing themselves, yeah.
I think being really respectful of the role of scrutiny, you know, and the challenge um, that we have through scrutiny, I think that is something that we could take back to the schools forum and just to share that actually we've had this conversation this afternoon, you know, and some of the challenge that we've received from scrutiny and is there perhaps an opportunity to, you know, to review um, things, you know, throughout the year? Absolutely.
And I think that's my point, it's not about bringing the funding back, it's just about raising that point and a concern and sharing it with the schools to make sure that their attention is there and it's not, you know, overseen, overlooked. Thank you.
Yeah, and, and I've, I've done that in part of my comms to, to school leaders, um, in terms of explaining where the decision and the impact the decision has and the responsibilities and the, the, you know, the, the, what schools still need to do in terms of the, the funding that's available.
That, thanks for that. Just tangentially building on to that a little bit, just one of the things we know that dramatically impacts on outcomes uh, i- is attendance. And we know one of the things that particular, for, for girls that can impact attendance is uh, when girls come on the period and there's, there's not an availability of period products. And then therefore, because they're not available, they're not coming into school, so they're missing school. Can I just ask, I know that, that there was a scheme that started this year, academic year, uh, not perfect, but providing period product scheme for schools and colleges. Do you know, is that continuing next year? I know, because it runs up till the end of this academic year. I haven't heard anything about it continuing. I know there was talk about it being axed, I'm just wondering, given the impact that that has had in improving attendance, is it continuing? Do we know?
Councillor Cohen, we'd have to go and check, we'd have to go. I don't have that information to hand today, but we can absolutely double check.
Jules?
Oops, um, yeah, we, we did start a very similar scheme, I think the year before Covid hit, um, if, 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 if the board remembers. Um, and you, you were involved in that, weren't you? Yeah, uh, where we, um, and Julie, you were involved and we consulted with young people in schools at the time, um, on how we should best do that and how we should best approach it. Um, and um, I know at the time we put free sanitary products in all our hubs and all our schools, including primary schools, um, key stage two in primary schools as well. Um, so, um, we, we can definitely find that, that, that was uh, continuing, but I, I understand that then Covid happened and, um, you know, things were interrupted. So we'll, we'll, we'll go and check things.
I was thinking specifically, because there was a national scheme
Oh, right, yeah.
uh, introduced at the beginning of this academic year, um, that ran through to the end of this academic year. Uh, and I'm just wondering if that's continuing.
And that's the point that we will check, councillor Cohen. We had our own Leeds specific service, as colleagues have referenced, and then the national scheme came in. But we'll absolutely go and um, check whether we've had confirmation that that will be continuing.
Excellent, thank you very much. Um, I've got Ollie and Ryan who both want to come back with five points. Before they come in, has anybody got anything else? Yeah, Emma.
Well, sorry, I didn't realise you meant now. I was trying to form a, a question. Um, I dropped my daughter back at university at Liverpool yesterday. I won't tell the whole story, but then popped for tea to an old university friend who happens to be um, public health consultant. And he um, works for Child of the North, um, with part of the Health Equity. So we ended up having like a big conversation, as me and Rob often do, about, um, you know, if you can do one thing, like what, what can you do about addressing inequality? So more and more, all, my friend's called Dave Taylor Robinson, a lot of their work, you know, so much is decided in early years. So like, resource, any resource that we have, like, needs to go sort of more and more towards those years. So I know like all the Marmot work we're doing, the sort of best start strategy, um, is kind of highlighting that, so it's more just an encouragement that that's like the right way to go. Because, you know, by the time a child starts school, like so much of their future is like, is mapped out. So I think, I was just trying to drag up his report that he was talking about. But um, he said like, if we actually don't just have a focus on poverty, but focus on early years poverty, um, you can improve educational outcomes um, seventeen times over. So don't ask me where they get their stats from, but it's all in the Child of the North report, which is part of Health Equity North. So it's just, it's just like, it's kind of obvious, but all like, all the evidence like bears out that if we're wanting to improve educational outcomes for um, people like the, the most deprived, then like, we need to like, highlight that. We don't need to just look at poverty, but we need to look at like, where are these young people? Where are these like really young children? And obviously, we know the birth rate is falling, um, so that, that's going to sort of change where these kids are maybe across the city. And we just need like a really strong focus on like finding um, those kids who are like in the lowest and like putting as much resource as possible. So it's just more, I guess it's like, in all our poverty strategy, are we like looking specifically at early years poverty?
I think, no, I think as, as colleagues have referenced this afternoon, um, there's been a lot of work and the, the strategies came here in terms of the best start and beyond strategy. So previously, that strategy just um, covered children up until they were two. The revised strategy now runs up until children are five. So again, really recognising that transition, you know, and children being school ready. Um, I think you're absolutely right. I think, um, you know, obviously we've got our early years strategy, but it does need to be targeted. And again, when you look at the children and young people's plan, it's really clear and we're really um, overt that for some children, we need to go faster, we need to go quicker, because we need to, um, we need to close the gap, you know. And for those children who are more vulnerable, who are living in poverty, we know that the gap is, is bigger. So again, as we've um, reviewed our services, you know, we've just gone and we're touching into the paper that's further on on the agenda. But as we're looking at family help, as we're looking at our um, family hubs, you know, as we're looking at our clusters, as we're, as councillor Hayden said, meeting with our early years providers right across the city, whether that's childminders, whether that's voluntary sector, you know, early in the life of the, the challenge or the problem and early in the life of the child is absolutely got to be fundamental to what we do, but also that targeted approach, you know. So as an example, you know, we know that in terms of our children looked after, just as an example, that our rate per ten thousand, which is the rate that every local authority is measured on, you know, for our areas of highest deprivation in the city, that rate doubles, you know. So we absolutely know that for children living in the areas of highest deprivation in the city, we know that their outcomes are going to be like, you know, poorer. So again, targeting our resource, you know, across the city and in terms of those geographic areas. And this is where family help comes in and this is where we'll, we'll talk about this further on in the paper this afternoon. But really targeting that family help as well to the families that need it most, to the children that need it most, has got to be key to our strategy.
Um, just to come into that, um, I think, I've sent you the report, I think, the report that I think you're referring to, but we are working with now Baroness, um, and Longfield, um, and the University of Leeds, and it's called Coral Child Health Outcomes. Um, and um, there's a, which a whole, and it, a lot of the work is um, based on the Born in Bradford, um, work that's been going on for the last eleven year or so years, um, which it gives us a whole wealth of, um, so we're working really closely with them to make sure that, that they kind of dovetail with us and, um, and that focus on the best start. And actually, it's not when a child's born, it's when a child's conceived that, um, that we start with, with best start, um, and the health of the mother, um, and her environment and, and the, and the wider family. Um, and hot, the effect that that has on, so yes, we are um, very, but also in terms of, I mean, we talked about, um, we were talking about just a bit earlier about reading and, and things like that. Actually, play and that interaction, that social interactions that Julie talked about is really important. So our play strategy comes into it in terms of addressing um, disadvantage as, as well. And disadvantage doesn't necessarily mean poverty, but all types of different, of disadvantage. Um, so last week I was at Grimes Stig Primary School, an incredible primary school, um, and with the reception class doing um, a leaplets programme where, you know, I had to do a plank at nine o'clock in the morning, which is not my no- normal um, start of the day. Um, but just um, looking at the whole wellbeing of, of the child. So there's an awful lot, I don't know whether Farah wants, did you want to come in here?
I just wanted to add, we've been, we've also been working with NESTA, um, around um, in particular, speech and language and the impact and communication and how um, our early years teams, teams working with families, how we engage and support parents of children in early years. And that's been really successful. So we've worked with NESTA over three years now. Um, and the working leads has informed their national report and that will continue. So um, it is a priority across the board. Um, and really focusing on that disadvantage and what we can do in those most disadvantaged groups, with those most disadvantaged groups. So there's been a lot of learning there as well, um, that we've incorporated into our family hubs, the work of the family hubs, um, and also will be incorporated into the family help uh, teams and offer.
Thank you, that, just, just this debate just reiterates how much goes into outcomes. I, I mean, we, we could not have a more multifaceted debate. The things that impact what a young person achieves and obtains at the various key points and, and the impact, it's, it's a real eye opener. Okay, very, very, very briefly, and I reserve the right to cut you off if I think you're not being, uh, Ollie and then Ryan. I mean both, I mean both of you.
Very briefly, Chair. Um, yeah, I think the points that councillor Flint was making about the early years poverty and also Shanaz as well, the, the points you made, um, were important. One, one thing that wasn't in this report, but I know we've talked about before, is the um, offer around free childcare um, across the city and how there are quite often gaps within that. And interestingly, it's not gaps, um, it's very often gaps in the areas where parents might benefit the most from it. And, and so I, I guess the question is, um, is, is around some of the ongoing work that's being done in terms of take-up, particularly understanding um, who is not taking up the offer, given, given how important it can be. Um, and particularly with newer communities, um, so what, what work is being done there and what work can be done um, in terms of community groups and faith communities in particular, um, in some of those areas and with some of those residents who are not taking it up. Because um, I think what Judy said around trusted relationships is really important and particularly where people might not trust government, local government, national government. Um, how can we build up some of those relationships? Was that sufficiently brief, Chair?
It'll have to be. Colleagues.
Sorry, we just, um, yeah, I think there's obviously the, the work of the family outreach workers through our children's centres and through our schools and the promotion of the take-up. We've always been really lucky that the take-up of our three and four-year-olds provision has always been really, really strong. Um, there are times as we move through, obviously we've seen the decline in birth rates, the number of children, um, taking up places or needed a place has changed. And so we're constantly monitoring that sufficiency and the need for provision. Um, one of the challenges around the um, funded entitlement is that families really want that provision to be free and that places a pressure on, on the, the system. And we're working with the providers for them to continue to make it free at the point of delivery, um, and for families to always have access to that learning provision at the early years. Um, so our family outreach work service kind of continues to support families. In terms of the overview of the communities and the groups that either do or don't take up their offer, I think that's something that we can continue to work on and we can look into a little bit more. I think over the, the past kind of, probably since Covid really, um, that oversight and the, the real kind of delving into that data, we could probably do a little bit more of that.
Yeah, and just to say that that was a real focus of the um, partnership that Farah talked about in relation to NESTA. So when we began our partnership with NESTA as part of the discovery phase, what we did was we looked at the data right across, um, the city in terms of um, take-up of the offer, but also take-up um the city in terms of um take up of the offer, but also take up of our children's centres. We did a lot of work with um parents and carers. Um, also a lot of work with parents and carers um from the global majority and ethnically diverse backgrounds. Um, and again, thinking about our most di- diverse areas. And actually, we learned a lot in terms of um just some of that feedback. So um as an example, some of the feedback had we had was that actually they would like a lot more outdoor play and outdoor activity as opposed to indoor play. There were um, there were cultural norms, there were cultural, different cultural views in terms of early years um education, you know, and um daycare. And as you say, councillor, it was just those trusting relationships really. So we have done quite a lot of work with some of our, um, so if I think about our Gypsy Roma traveller team as an example, who will really, in terms of that active outreach, really be working right out there in the community, knocking doors, um, you know, communications in different languages to really try and promote the benefits, you know, of early years and daycare and childcare. But it's an ongoing um piece of work, you know, it's something that we we're constantly having to review and to, you know, and to continue. And again, to hear back from parents and carers and communities. I think the other thing here, I think, is the role of the third sector, but also um faith, you know, and community sectors in terms of them being trusted adults and trusted and respected individuals within certain communities and actually how we can work with them together to promote really the bond, the benefits, you know, for outcomes of children of being able to access these services. So there's a lot going on, but as Rebecca says, you know, we can we can never be doing enough, really. Thank you.
Right. Uh, thanks. Uh, in appendix two, page forty-two, I was just thinking of something that councillor Jones mentioned about the difference in attainment depending on uh percentage of disadvantage. And I think across the the board today, they've heard, we're very keen to hear about closing the gap. Um, so for next year, could the uh Progress Eight figures? So what's presented in appendix two is the full cohort Progress Eight. I think what would be really useful for us to see is disadvantaged Progress Eight versus non-disadvantage rather than the average. And the reason I say that is because I think it might paint a bigger picture um in that, I won't name it to avoid a a declaration of interest, but the one I'm familiar with, um, you'll see that in some areas, the Progress Eight for disadvantaged is actually better than non-disadvantage in some schools. And I think if we have that painted for us, that then leads to the next question is why? What's behind that? Is it financial? Is it pedagogy? Is it pa- uh patterns or whatever? So just a request, Chair.
Um, I have a sneaking suspicion that there isn't Progress Eight for the next two years because the Progress Eight predicated on SATs and we're now about to hit the two years where we didn't have SATs. Oh, it's just amazing the things I know. Um, so I think it could, I think it's a very valid request, but perhaps we could look to pick that up uh when uh when Progress Eight re-kicks in. Is that okay? So I've been working on, I've been working on data just over the weekend.
Okay, just to add as well, that is already in the um public domain, Progress Eight by disadvantage, it's part of the performance table, so it is available publicly.
Oh, hello. Thank you for that. Uh, any other questions? Thank you. Any other comments? Helen, Julie, anything else? No, okay. Can I just somewhat mindful that this is my last meeting as Chair, uh, can I just take the opportunity to uh certainly set out my thanks, but also hopefully the board's thanks to all the schools, teachers, support staff, children, families, uh professionals of every description uh who work within our education system for their work, their commitment uh on the academic outcomes, not just last year, but going forward as well. And uh can I also take this opportunity to wish the very, very best of luck to all of our young people who are frantically revising right around the city for their GCSEs, for their A levels, for all of their various exams, for SATs, for all these things that are coming up in the next few months. I know we wish each and every one of them the very best of luck and may their, all their hard work pay off. Um, so uh we have the recommendations, page nineteen of our bundle. Uh, someone happy to move those? Thank you, Ollie. And so happy to second, I'll second them. All in favour? Any against? Any abstentions? That's carried unanimously. Thank you very much indeed. Are we okay to have like a five minute comfort break? Gentlemen of a certain age. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody, for that. In a change to our previously advertised schedule, I'm just going to flip around items 10 and items nine. So we're going to take item 10 now. And can I plead that you remind me at the end of item 10 that I need to go back to item nine? Because I will forget. Yeah, I don't mind who reminds me, so long as somebody reminds me. Because I promise you faithfully, I will forget. So, item 10, Further Education in Leeds, 31st of March, Working Group Summary. So the purpose of bringing this item is obviously we had a detailed working group in March, very end of March. But we need to make sure we bring that formally into the public domain, as it were. But I will just hand over to Officer Andrea. Do you want to kick us off? And just very, very briefly, and then we'll go from there. Thanks.
Thanks, Chair. Just a quick summary. It was great to see lots of people coming together around this topic and able to explore in much more detail some of the issues that are emerging. A quick reminder, this is the post-16 sufficiency conversation and about creating enough capacity for learning for young people in the city, 16 to 19-year-olds. The working group looked at a whole range of different issues and pulled out some key themes in there. We were lucky, fortunate enough on that day to receive a DFE announcement around some £10 million of capital funding for further education estates. So that's sitting with the Directorate now to be deployed. So there are only two local authorities in the country that were allocated that funding. There was ourselves and Manchester. So I think it bears testament to the work that the local authority and officers have done in terms of elevating the conversation. And obviously councillor Hayden on her mission to Westminster as well. So it was a really useful backdrop to be able to explore in more depth some of the other issues that came around. And the emerging themes for us from that, I won't go through the discussion because you've got those in the paper, but the emerging themes that we felt still needed to progress were around the addressing of places per se. So that's entry level, level one, level two, and vocational and technical places for level three learners. It was the issue around specifically young people with education, health and care plans, and SEND learners. And I think that's touched on some of the outcomes discussion that I've just been listening to in the background there. So the need for us to do some more thinking around that and making sure that we've got sufficiency for those more vulnerable learners as well. We talked about NEAT performance and specifically about how we support the progression for young people from our schools. So once they've got those great outcomes at GCSE, what are they progressing on to in terms of post-16 options? And how that guidance and support and transition support appears from there? That also linked to the skills agenda and the need to make sure that our learning is properly aligned with where the jobs for the future are going to be. So young people have the best opportunities in life there. The other issues that were touched on was around the capital, sorry, the assets that the local authority has and how the disposal of those assets was being looked at and whether there was any conversation to be had about the use of any of those assets in terms of provision of post-16 learning. And also the need to expand more generally, the lack of space for current providers to expand was highlighted there as well. So I think that is generally the key themes. There was a, it did touch on transport and we go back obviously to the disadvantaged communities and the fact that some of our wards are much more affected by issues of sufficiency than others. And the conversation about the transport not being funded in West Yorkshire for 16 to 18-year-olds in the same way as it now is in South Yorkshire, already is in Manchester, already is in London and a number of other combined authority areas. So that's one that we were going to put some emphasis on as well. I think that has summarized it. Might have missed it something.
Thank you. I think that was an absolutely superb summary. Thank you. Colleagues, anybody want to add anything to that before I bring in any questions from the board?
I just want to thank Andrea and her team and everybody for the work that continues to do this. But it's an awful lot of hard work. And also thanks scrutiny for your interest in this and support. And I think the councillor Cohen Hayden, pincer approach obviously had an effect on the, a very quick effect on our government. But yeah, so just to thank scrutiny as well, as well as Andrea and all the partners around the city. Because this was a real team leads approach. You know, we've got an issue and the whole city has come together to try and sort it out. So yeah, thank you.
Just one letter from Helen and I, and that was it. So it's amazing. If only, if only we could achieve that with every issue, then we'd be busy writing letters all day. Tim?
We did, thanks Chair. We did also discuss the issue about people coming from outside Leeds. And is there anything in the admissions criteria about places for people in Leeds? It was kind of said this isn't an issue, but I have had colleagues in FE telling me that it is an issue. So I wondered whether that's been explored since the meeting and whether we've found any more detail on that.
So there has been a conversation internally at Leeds City College about what that looks like and a bit of a review of the data to see what the travel to learn patterns are. What we do know, working with other FE colleges, and there is a system that collects that data from the individual learner record for us. And we know that the net import and export of young people from Leeds and Wakefield and Leeds and Bradford is fairly equal in many cases. But there are some young people that do travel significant distances to come into Leeds to learn. Most of the difference is on the borders, you know, the PUDS, Leeds Bradford border. There's some South Leeds, Wakefield movements as well. So it's not quite as marked as one might think if you just looked at postcodes. And sometimes learners will travel for specialist provision that they can't get in their local areas. But interestingly, we are reviewing, due to the tightness of being able to fund so many learners, we get an allocated amount for travel bursary. And we are reviewing the policy at the moment. So that's due to be signed off internally at the college. And there would be no advantage for somebody travelling from Wakefield or Bradford into Leeds through that policy next year.
But surely this, we will see people, and I know we do see people because I worked at Bradford Cours long enough. We will see people going exactly the other way for specifics. So from memory of 15 years ago, it was quite even, to be absolutely honest. So I really don't see why we've got an issue here. I think we're making moles out of mine. I've lost the port, sorry. Yeah, but from my point of view, I always saw, because people would go for specifics to Bradford that they couldn't get in Leeds, and people would come from Bradford into Leeds. And that, to be honest, I actually welcome that, to be honest, because it means that our young people mix sometimes with different cultures. And I think there's massive advantage in that. So I don't view that as a problem, to be honest.
I think you're right about the balancing of numbers. And like you say, the mobility around the subregion is important. And we need to remember that as a city, we do want people travelling into work in Leeds. So there is some benefit to having some of that. But yeah, we are keeping an eye on it just because of the sufficiency issues.
I think it's an important point to make. But when I was teaching in LS9, you would get pupils with Wakefield postcodes but actually lived in Leeds. And it's the same on the Bradford border as, you know, so we've got to be careful that, you know, just because somebody's got a different postcode, we have to go by who collects your bins, don't we? So do you remember the Covid times? So who your local authority is? So it's not as clear cut and there is those, you know, about building those relationships across West Yorkshire because people will go elsewhere to work and travel back to Leeds. And lots of people come into work in Leeds and live elsewhere. But yes, this money is for our Leeds young people. And, you know, we've got to be careful around that, so yeah.
Thank you. You've just mentioned the post-16 transport. Given the fact that there's been this £10 million, is there any scope for now not stopping the post-16 transport?
So the transport support I was referring to is the money that learning providers provide to students to buy bus passes with. It's not the local authority transport system and it's not a fraction of that. So that money can't be spent in the post-16 transport.
It's also capital funding, so no, it couldn't be unused for that. And I mean, that's been worked through at the moment with people applying, but it's not been stopped. The post-16 send transport's not been stopped. In fact, you know, young people will receive it. And if you're already on it, it's going to continue anyways for new applicants. But around, you know, changes to the policy rather than, you know, we will still have quite a lot of SEND post-16 transport taking place.
Craig?
Hiya. So just on the postcode point, a good chunk of my ward is actually BD postcode, but very much part of Leeds. I was actually subbing on this committee last time we're talking about further education. So it's quite apt to be here when we've got a really positive result. So massive well done to all officers, the Chair, and to the exec member for your fantastic work in getting that. I'm sure hundreds of young people will benefit from that moving forward. But my question is, we've got the money, it's only five months. How are we going to get that where it needs to be so that we've got that sufficiency in time for the new school year?
Anyone who knows me personally knows that I could spend £10 million within five months.
I don't think John Lewis is the recipient.
But yeah, this is for September 2026, when we know that the big bulge is coming through. So we have got a little longer than five months. There will be stipulations around the money and how we can spend it, you know, to stop people like me. But it's, no, but we're very much, and it's capital spending. So we've already organised roundtables with different providers to see how we can support and how we can use this money to the best of, the best, I'll let Andrea come in. But can I say thank you for your comments there? Actually, I got goosebumps when you said that hundreds of young people will benefit. And I'm getting all emotional now, but that's a really lovely thing to say because that's who we're talking about in the end, isn't it? Is hundreds of young people who would have been disadvantaged by not having these places. And so I really welcome.
Yeah, and over the years, it'll be thousands because the point about capital is it grows in time. The number of beneficiaries just keeps growing every year on year. It's like a magic porridge pot. We do have challenges around numbers for September 2025. And councillor Hayden's just said, you know, we're talking to independent training providers. We've got a roundtable coming up very shortly. And the FE colleges are working closely with the local authority to try and look at how we can manage the placing of pupils and making sure we've got good waiting lists in place at the moment. We've also stepped up the activity around the September offer. So really looking at talking to schools about the extent to which they know that their young people have received offers in learning. Because once we know who has got a definite offer, we can work more closely with the ones that haven't been sorted out. So the problem's not gone away as such, you know, there will be still some issues rumbling. But we are trying to manage this as well as we can as a collective partnership. And that's what's been great about this, the fact that, you know, it's collaboration over everything else. And that's been really brilliant.
Just quickly, just suffice to say that Andrew and I actually caught each other over the coffee again to be continuing to progress the conversations about the importance of being able to passport this funding as quickly as we can to enable us to achieve the outcomes at pace.
Tim?
I was going to ask about September 25, so you've just answered the question. Thank you.
Anybody else? No, okay, thank you. So recommendations, and I've just added a new one as well. So recommendation one, that we note and adopt, the working group summary. It's appendix one, which provides details of the discussion and outcomes from our working group on the 31st of March. Two, that we suggest to a future scrutiny board that they continue to consider this matter going forward. Three, that we note the areas identified at the working group for possible further action. Those being how to address the need to support EHCP and SEND learners in further education, NEAT performance and progression, a need for better alignment of learning and provision to the skills agenda, and looking in depth at what assets there are to support new provision and whether there's likely to be a need to rebalance the prioritisation of how assets are used and disposed of. And then I'd like to suggest a number four, slightly controversial, but just given the tremendous success of councillor Hayden and I in lobbying those in power, that perhaps councillor Hayden and I could write to the West Yorkshire mayor and encourage her to follow the example of other mayors around the country and provide funding for post-16 travel to school and college. I'm looking to councillor Hayden as to whether, yeah. So I will propose all of those. So we'll curate a second. Thank you, Tim. All in favour? Any against? That is, oh abstentions, thank you. That is carried. Thank you. Item nine, I remembered, yay. So thank you, colleagues, for that. Item nine, which is the independent review of children's social care, update on implementation. Farah, would you like to kick us off?
Thank you, councillor Cohen. Us colleagues around the table will know the Children's Social Care Review 2022, Josh McAllister's review, was published in 2022. And the government's response to that review, Stable Homes Built on Love, which we have come to give updates on a couple of times now to the board, captured kind of the need for simplifying the system. The review recognised fundamentally that whole-scale reform was needed so that families had a better offer of help. We've come here today just to update on some of the national changes. The review implementation has now transferred into the social care reforms, children's social care reforms. So we'll give an update on the national changes, but also our response in Leeds from a partnership. The report highlights where we're at in Leeds and where some of the national changes are at. We're not part of the Pathfinders, but there has been lots of learning from the Pathfinders resulting in a publication of the Families First Partnership Guide, which will inform us as a partnership where we go next. The work of the Pathfinders and the changes in Leeds are overseen by the Leeds Children's Safeguarding Partnership, which is right. So we've been working with colleagues in health and in education and also with the police on the next steps. The family help part of the work is our first step in Leeds. And we can say more about that as questions arise. As Julie mentioned earlier, we've got a partnership event planned in the east of Leeds next week, where we've got colleagues from across the statutory partners, but also the third sector that serve those communities to ensure that we really capture the needs of that locality, but also learning from people who work in communities, who understand communities well. We've got representations of parents as well and voice and influence, which is key to that work. So I'm really excited about where we go next. You will have heard of our Family Hubs, our recent launch. And this will build on the strengths of the Family Hubs. Just to add, Leeds played a key role in the review and the feedback from Leeds was captured in there and sits with our family valued approach and our family group decision-making. So really making sure that we're engaging with families early and learning from families what families need. So the recommendations of the review are not, will not mean a fundamental change in Leeds. What will be a significant change is a partnership working around those, in particular when we get to the child protection space of the recommendations. I'll leave it there. If there are any questions, happy to take questions.
Thanks for that, Farah. Colleagues? Any questions? There's a lot of detail there. Any questions at all? Yeah?
Oh yeah, having read through it all, there's yet again reference to kinship carers and fostering. Yet again, there's no mention of adopted families. And it is quite a large cohort of children that are just forgotten about. I think we need to be doing more for these adopted families because it's all right putting in all the early help stuff, which is brilliant and we absolutely need that. But some of the adopted families have missed out on all that. So they are really struggling from high school onwards and it's a massive issue. And we keep raising this and every report that goes out, nobody ever mentions adopted children. And again, it's not in here. So I just wanted to raise it that it's still not raised.
Thank you, Maria. It's a really important area for us in Leeds in particular around the specific needs of children who are adopted. So if we think about early life trauma, often children who are adopted also have SEND. They have complications and additional needs and factors. And we've spoken extensively through the role of the Parent Carers Forum. So in Leeds, we're quite keen that in family help in that space, that we keep the needs of those children when we're thinking of specific groups of children, adoptive children, central to that discussion. So development of family help will absolutely, I can reassure you, consider the needs of adoptive children. The report includes areas that are highlighted in the national reforms. And specifically, adoptive children were not discussed there, so that's why they're not in the report. But I can reassure the board that adoptive children in Leeds, in particular, looking at the specific challenges that adoptive parents, adoptive children are dealing with, will absolutely form a core part of the development of services as we move forward.
Yeah, if I can just, yeah, this is the independent review of children's social care. And when children become adopted, they are no longer looked after, you know, no longer looked after by the local authority. Having said that, then I would absolutely not forgotten about, and I sit on the One Adoption Chair, the West Yorkshire One Adoption. Adopted children are now come under the virtual school. So I know that our virtual school head in terms of education now includes children that are adopted. So there's support there. In terms of multi-systemic therapy, which is done through One Adoption West Yorkshire, you know, there's an awful lot of work goes on to, because you're absolutely right, especially in those teenage years when families can break down because of the challenges are so much that I wish I had more resources to put into it and wish we could do, wish we could do more. But, and there's always more to do, but they're very much not forgotten in terms of, you know, our thinking. And they are part of our Families First and part of our, you know, approach in terms of family first and the Family Hubs, et cetera. They're just, because this is a social care, it's about children looked after who are currently.
And I think that's maybe where it needs to change a little bit. Because I know you're saying they're not looked after, but a lot of children do become looked after again. You get a lot of adoption breakdowns. And actually, the fundamental support from Leeds One Adoption isn't there. It's, there's not the support there. They are more of a signposting agency by their own admission to us. I just think the word adoption and adopted family just needs its own heading sometimes. So we know that we're not forgotten about.
I agree with you, Maria. I really, really... I really, really agree with you. And I think this gives us a real opportunity in Leeds, you know, I suppose, as Farah said, when Josh McAllister was undertaking his review, he came, he spoke with members of the senior leadership team, with partners, about our whole strength-based, family-valued approach, you know, family group decision-making, family-led decision-making in Leeds, and that's reflected in what we see now in terms of the recommendations. But we've never been bound by, in some ways, the direction of travel nationally, you know, we've, we've embraced it, you know, often because we want the best for children and families, but also we've ploughed our own furrow in Leeds based on what we think is needed and what we think is right for children and families. So I really think this is a real opportunity, you know, we've got challenges financially, we've got challenges with resources, but again, that shouldn't hold us back in terms of really, when we're looking at family help and the opportunities, thinking about what is the offer? What's the specific offer to children and families where children have been adopted? And again, central to that, you know, the event that we're having next week is listening to the voice of adoptive parents and carers, you know, because you will know better than us what you need and what would have made the difference. So it's a real opportunity.
I just wanted to add, and it'd be unfair of me not to, that I have met with several adoptive parents, and one of the themes coming across is people having to repeat their story, and that a lot of it is about workforce development and looking at through a really trauma-informed approach and understanding of adoption. And so that's also a priority area for us around workforce development, is that people don't have to repeat their story. What family help and the reforms allow us to, is to move away from over-assessing, where we need to do repeated assessments to understand the need. So it'll allow us, it'll allow us the legal framework, but also the, a blueprint on offering support earlier. But the adoption discussions, we've been very clear with the project team that they are a part, adoption breakdown in particular is a priority for us, because what we know is that where families get support early and understanding, that they're less likely to break down. So, so that's, I, I wanted to share that because I have met with many adopters, and there is a consistent theme around that of the lack of understanding of the specific issues around adoption in the teenage year. So we, we are definitely going to incorporate that into any offer and development of services in Leeds.
Thank you. Thanks, Kate. Tim?
Considering the theme of adopted families, is it, I've had various, parents contact me to say that counselling for adopted families, or for the children of adopted families has been withdrawn, or the funding for the counselling has been withdrawn. Is that correct? And if so, are we doing anything to ameliorate that? That, sorry, that's been withdrawn at a national level, so are we locally doing anything to ameliorate that?
So I've met with the head of service for One Adoption West Yorkshire, so there's been some national changings to the Adoption Support and Special Guardianship Fund. And there was two parts of it. Families were anxious of when the decision would be made, and that's been recently announced, but there has been a reduction in, in that. And that fund allowed parents to access support, specific individual support for their young person, for their child around counselling. One Adoption West Yorkshire covers the five local authorities. We haven't got a resource to replace that fund, or the gaps in that, in that provision, so I can't promise that. What we have got is ongoing discussions with the I C B, with, with partners, and as local authorities, so it's a priority in discussions through the One Adoption West Yorkshire Board, but with partners as well to see what is available for adoptive children and their families, because that has, there is a significant difference from what families were getting before and what they, what they will be getting in the future. Again, the discussions are focused on services available to all families, having more of an understanding of issues specific to children who are adopted, because the counselling that was available was a specialist resource, but actually, if we're talking about earlier intervention and support and targeted support, then it's about, as statutory agencies in particular, how we support families earlier. So those discussions are ongoing with I C B colleagues, et cetera. Those are very recent changes to the Adoption Support Fund, but we are having those discussions.
Thanks. I'm told that families are devastated by this, that they were just getting somewhere, and it's really had a bad effect on them. Is it, have we fed that back to government level at all, or can we, can we do that?
Yeah, we've had those conversations with D F E, with others, just about the significance and the importance, and also the feedback from families in relation to the matter.
So I have Ollie, I've got Kayleigh, so, Ollie.
Thank you, Chair. I think, I think when we think about both parents who've adopted and also, and also parents who are fostering, one of the things I'm quite struck with is, is just how, just how committed they are. So actually, two neighbours in my street have, I've, I've spoken with them quite a bit about the process, and also residents as well. And I wonder if there's more that we could be doing in terms of former adopted parents and foster parents as well, so particularly as people get older, as, because it seems to me that there's a lot of knowledge there, there's a lot of knowledge, there's a lot of commitment, and I think particularly for younger parents, that might be quite helpful. And I wonder if there are more things that we can be doing in terms of, in terms of tapping into that knowledge and tapping into that experience, and particularly given that the funding is always a challenge, and there is no magic money tree, unfortunately. So can we be tackling, can we be tapping more into that knowledge that we've got already?
Absolutely. I mean, that we recognise that harnessing the wisdom, if you like, and the experiences of, I'll start with foster carers, foster carers who have, have fostered children over a number of years and how they, how supporting newer foster carers, that's part of our fostering strategy. So those discussions have already started and ideas around that, and obviously, I can't, I won't go into the full fostering strategy here, but I can reassure you that those have already started, and foster carers supporting other foster carers, former foster carers, as well as current foster carers who are more experienced, foster carers from different communities, and you know, that's, we've had some really positive results in our, in supporting foster carers and also recruiting foster carers around that. So that forms part of our wider sufficiency strategy. In relation to adopters, like I said, part, the start of that work I mentioned earlier, myself meeting with, with parents who are adopted, but also through One Adoption West Yorkshire parents' feedback, there's been an offer from, we really value lived experience and, and people with lived experience, and providing that forum in Leeds to, to capture feedback, but also look at what we do next in relation to support. So we've had some offers from people who are, who have adopted, from adoptees as well, to, to help with workforce development, to, to talk to workers. So we are progressing those, those conversations, and that element will absolutely form part of our response to the reforms.
Thank you, Kayleigh.
Thank you, Chair. Just, you know, just a comment really, and, and just to say, this is really great to see. On page fifty, national rules on the use of agency work and staff, it's really great to see the, the review on, on the cost of agency work, and, you know, and the social workers stuff. And the fact that, you know, there is, page fifty-one goes on to say, since the implementation, there have been several agency staff that have agreed to be recruited within the council. I just wanted to say, you know, this whole review, the McAllister and everything, it just shows that, you know, certain things can be reviewed, and it doesn't mean that, you know, because you, we're reviewing agency work, there's no work that they can come to, Leeds is now recruiting, and I'm, I'm just really pleased, really, it's just, I'm really pleased to see this, it's great, yeah.
Thank you. Yes, I mean, it's, we, as Julie alluded to and Farah has, we, we don't have to just go along with what is happening nationally or regionally, we can do something, but I have to, I have to, in terms of agency staff, really, in terms of the director and deputy director working with other directors of children's services across the region in particular, to address this, and so there's been a whole review about how we can support each other instead of poaching, not, not that we would ever approach any other, you know, social workers, obviously, but just because the, the challenges are so high that we've come together as a region, and, and I, I myself with the, the other lead members across the region to say, right, we've all got these problems in terms of recruitment and retention of social workers, they're a very, you know, scarce, not very scarce, but you know, they're a scarce resource, and we don't all want to be, so that, it's not, so in terms of how much we pay agencies, we've, we've coming together with, with a view to supporting some local authorities that may not be able, may have challenges that they can't yet, you know, by, follow that, those rules. So it, it's more about supporting each other as a region, coming together as a region to get, and this, and the fact that if you, you know, leave one local authority, you can't then work in another one within a certain period of time, because, you know, it's not fair on families and, and, and the teams if, if people are moving around and, you know, too much. Having said that, people need career progression, and they will go to other authorities to do, to do that. We're quite a small geographic area, you know, in some ways, it's quicker for me to get to Wake, parts of Wakefield than it is to, certainly the west of Leeds, you know, so it's, yeah, it, it's an ongoing challenge, but one that we're working together regionally without stopping social workers making those progress and, you know, being too parochial about it. So thank you for the, and we need to come together because borders are artificial, aren't they? And we need to work as a region and as a country to make sure that our families have what they need.
Yeah, just on the use of agency, I want to add, so we have to, all local authorities report to the D F E now on agency, on caseloads, on staff turnover, and, you know, so these are figures from last September, end of September, we have to report, that were published last month, and Leeds, across our region, across West Yorkshire, we have, now have the lowest turnover, so we significantly of social work staffs. I'm really proud of the work that, that's been done around, to support workers, which has then a positive impact on children and families because they're not seeing a change of worker. So those are published figures, and they'll annually, we'll be reporting on those caseloads and on turnover of staff. So it, it just shows that, you know, we have, we haven't held back on being pathfinders, you know, we have implemented and already started that work, which is real positive progress in Leeds.
Thanks for that, Farah.
Yeah, I just want to thank Farah and the whole team, well, and Julie as well, but just that, because we, we can talk about data on caseloads and, and things like that, and it sounds quite cold actually, but this is enabling people to do the best job that they can, and highly skilled, you know, professional social workers, and they want to do a really good job. If you've got a huge caseload, then that is not impossible for anybody, now, I don't care who you are, to, to do the job to the best of your, you know, ability and that impacts on families. So although it's like, it sounds very data-driven, this is about having the best, you know, balance for, and the best work-life for, for our social workers, yeah.
Anybody else? I think we've covered everything, but anything by way of conclusion? No?
Yeah, I'll, I'll give a, just, yeah, it's, when I went down in, it was the Bernardo's, and Josh McAllister was there, kind of, a lot of what's in, what was in the twenty twenty two report, we've been doing in Leeds for a long time, we haven't had to change much. Obviously, we want to implement it, but talking to other people, care experienced, young people, down in London, from other parts of the country, the, the experience is quite eye-opening for, for me, because I'm used to what, and the attitude that we've had in Leeds. So coming up next week is our ten-year anniversary of the Mockingbird for our foster carers, where they work like an extended family, and in a supportive way that we're talking. So, you know, we don't get everything right, we're constantly striving to, there's ongoing challenges, but in terms of, you know, I'm, I'm really proud of what we've been able to achieve and what we want to achieve, and that aspiration and that ambition, I'm most proud of that ambition, you know, for our families in Leeds.
Thanks, Helen. Okay, so I move that we note the content of this update report, someone happy to second that for me? Thanks, Ray. All in favour? Any against? Any abstentions? That is carried. Item eleven is our end of year statement. Rob?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Yes, this is the end of year statement taken annually by each scrutiny board on the council. It's part of Article six of the constitution, which informs the annual report process that goes to full council in July. The summary statement is attached to appendix one, providing an overview of what we've done this year and the statement from the Chair to introduce it. Just to note, Chair, unfortunately, well, for me in the main, there's a couple of date references that are incorrect, they refer to the last municipal year, so since, since the recommendations are asking us to publish it with amendment, I'd obviously pick those up as part of that and ensure that the correct year is referenced. Apart from that, Chair, I think that's, that's everything to note.
Thank you for that. So, is someone happy to propose that we, we approve its publication subject to the amendments? Ray, thank you very much, someone happy to second? Thank you. Jules, there we go. I was looking, I like everyone to be involved. All in favour? Yeah, all's. Any against? Any abstentions? That is carried. We then move to our work programme, item twelve. Rob?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Yes, just briefly, Chair, the work programme considered at every meeting that we have, it just provides the detail of, of, of the work that we've done, and the difference this time is around the draft dates that are included for reference, and you should all have a diary invite to reflect that. And also, there are some, there is some coverage of items to be picked up as a result of the work this year. Appendix one has the work programme, appendix two has the exec board minutes, obviously, any, any members have any comments, and obviously open to them. Thank you, Chair.
Any comments? Questions? Observations? Now, in that case, we are asked to note the append, the, no, we're not, don't feel I read the right thing. So we're asked to consider and approve the work programme, of course, subject to next year's Chair and Board. Our move, someone happy to second? Thank you, Karen. All in favour? Any against? Any abstentions? So we then move to the date and time of the next meeting, where it will be a newly constituted board with a brand-new spanking chair. Can I just take the opportunity to thank each and every one of the members of the Board, in whatever capacity you sit here, thank you all for your contributions during the year. I, I think we're an amazingly, an amazingly detailed-driven board, we get to the, really get into things, I think we've done. We get to the, really get into things. I think we've done some amazing work, particularly over the past two years and previous years as well. But I think we've done some amazing work, particularly, I think, around the EHCP work, some of the work looking at young asylum seekers. Some really important work we've done this year. So I just want to personally thank each and every one of you for all your help, work and support, particularly officers and Helen as well. As an exec member, so to each and every one of you, thank you very much indeed. Your next meeting is on the 25th of June, subject to the approval at the annual meeting of council. And with that, I close the meeting. Thank you, everybody.
Chair, can I just thank you for your leadership and chairing of this board over the last year, my first year in this particular post? So thank you very much. I'm sure I speak for, for all of us. Always being fair, always being, you know, detailed, as, as you say, and we all use the term critical friend and it's very much felt like that. So thank you. And can I wish you good luck and have an amazing year as Lord Mayor? So, and yeah, we'll be calling upon you to come to lots of children's events, won't we?
I, I hope so. I really hope so. Thanks, everybody.